We're live. Alderman Maricello will be up in a minute. We have thirteen resolutions, one ordinance to be voted on, and we have a public hearing at 5:45. When we adopt the agenda, there's an amendment that I'd like to make to switch the final three sheets to ordinance I first. Resolution fifty-nine, which is the fee, voting on the fee, and then resolution fifty-seven, which is the contract. And those were listed as Alderman Collins, and she has requested to have Alderman Maricello do them. But she'll be up in a minute, so by the time we go through some of these, they don't really concern him, then he'll take care of all of it. Resolution twenty-five, twenty-six dash forty-seven, resolution adopting minutes from the last common council meeting, Alderman Carpenter. Resolution twenty-five, twenty-six, forty-eight, resolution authorizing purchase of Taser equipment, APD, Alderman Collins.
Chief, do I have one of those?
Yes. Axon Enterprises, we make Taser, they're the main manufacturer of the Taser all law enforcement in our country uses. We're going to, we're receipt of the Taser tens, the newest kind. Our Tasers are currently ten years old. They're obsolete, they're no longer supported with software or hardware upgrade. It's a better, it's a better tool, it's a highly embedded tool, and it's a much needed and appreciated addition to what the officer's going to have with them when they're out on the street, so appreciate it very much.
Anybody have any questions for the chief or for Alderman Collins?
Chief, could I ask you about the frequency of the Taser's use?
It's, in today, it's a lot less from when we first, when they first were, you know, inceptioned back ten, twelve years ago. We used them frequently, but now it's such an established protocol and policy in all law enforcement, everyone around is aware of what they are and what they do, so we have to use them less and less frequently.
So just they're like, knowing that they're there causes people to fall in line?
They have a certain mystique about them.
It's a deterrent, it's a major deterrent, and especially they're, they're highly sophisticated now where they, every time the trigger is pulled on a Taser, it tracks an electronic log that is then tied back to evidence. What, how, how many times it was pulled, how long the trigger was pulled down, how long the duration was, things like that, just tremendous evidentiary wise and case wise, so in Axon it's definitely the foremost in that amongst anybody else.
Thank you, chief. Resolution twenty-five, twenty-six dash forty-nine, resolution twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-six, budget transfer, city clerk equipment, Alderman Carpenter. So she had some computers go down, she needs two new computers and her copier. Copier has, has served its life. It's, it's done over three hundred and fifty-
Over three hundred and seventy thousand copies.
Seventy thousand copies. And so we need to do a budget transfer, a decrease from the city clerk, city clerk's contractual expenses of forty-nine oh five, to an increase, to an increase expense for the city clerk equipment line, forty-nine oh five. Does anybody have any questions for Stacy, do you want to know anything about the equipment that she needs to replace? Resolution twenty-five, twenty-six dash fifty, resolution transferring funds, insurance, recovery, and AFD vehicle, Alderman Collins.
Any questions?
This was a regular motorcycle, not a e-bike, just-
I'm assuming it's a motorcycle, because that's what they put here, I think, they would have said the cycle.
It's pretty self-explanatory. Anybody got any questions for? Resolution twenty-five, twenty-six dash fifty-one, resolution authorizing memorandum of understanding with Grow Amsterdam, New York, Inc., regarding the operation of the farmer's market, Alderman Holiday.
Yeah, this is the farmer's market that we spoke about a few meetings back. Mayor Su Quanti had brought it up, but it's, looks to be an MOU. Mayor, would you like to elaborate a little more on this?
Yes. A grant from Senator Fahy, a New York State grant which she advocated and received for us, was, we, we thought was coming to the city, but was instead directed directly to this organization, Grow Amsterdam. And because they are, a grant usually takes a year, at least to get re, it's a reimbursement grant, usually takes a year to get the money. They don't have this amount of money as a small organization to front these expenses. So I had spoken to the council about this earlier. This would be in advance, basically, which Attorney Caselli has put together this memorandum, which kind of spells out how it's going to work. So we're going to give them money, and they are going to repay us back when they get their grant, and everything is going to be verified by expense receipts.
Understood. And can anybody else have any more questions?
So when is it set to open for next meeting?
The Grow, the farmer's market will be open in the summer of twenty-twenty-six, and it is going to be located in the Walter, look, a vacant lot alongside Walter Edward Museum. They have a two-year lease on that lot. So it's an exciting development, hopefully we can, this will be a thriving enterprise. Any other questions? Thank you, mayor. Resolution twenty-five, twenty-six dash fifty-two, resolution budget transfer, recreation department, laborer, and snow removal equipment, Alderman Carpenter. They need to have a labor position assist with Department of Operations throughout the year. They also need some equipment, so we're going to decrease, they had some expenses that came in under that we're going to be getting the money from. Pool chemicals with sixty-eight, or sixty-five, eighty, personal roads, ten thousand, contingency thirteen, four twenty, which adds up to twenty-five thousand, and we're going to increase the recreational personnel line and the equipment line to the tune of thirty thousand dollars. Any questions?
How many hours is this person going to work?
Be a full-time position. Full-time position.
Full-time?
Do you have any other information on that you'd like to share?
No, it's just that this will be a position, there are, throughout the year, there are several things that we can't get to. This will sort of be like a jack-of-all-trades position, someone who can, you know, do landscaping, painting, things like that, and so we're excited about the addition of this to our staff.
So is it non-union or is it union?
Good question, no, it's probably union.
I think it's union.
I'm non-union, so I wouldn't know, I'm not, no, I'm kidding, I already-
Any other questions?
Is it about seasonal? Did I guess something?
No, it'll be twelve months a year, but it will be doing, if, for instance, in the wintertime, it'll help us take snow off the street, off the sidewalks, et cetera. In the summertime, they'll be doing landscaping work.
Sure.
So they'll be doing seasonal work on a seasonal basis, but all year long.
Yeah.
No, I just know that I asked a question here, the snowplowing, the bridges, and parking lots that we own, the sidewalks, we ask people to clean their sidewalks, we should clean ours that way.
So would this move them up to three labor positions, or how many positions would they be having?
Recreation, they got Churchill.
They have a mechanic?
They have mechanic and two others. Mechanic, I have a mechanic, carpenter, and-
A, and Richie Alturi.
Richie Alturi, so yeah, so, whole recreation.
Is Kevin the mechanic?
Kevin playing, they're mechanics, just to go up there.
Good. Resolution twenty-five, twenty-six dash fifty-four, resolution authorizing contract with Greater Amsterdam School District, ambulance service, Alderman Collins.
Yeah, fifty-three.
You need fifty-three.
Skip one. I'm sorry?
You need to do fifty-three, why you do fifty-four, yeah.
What did I skip one? Oh, I did, you know why, they're both, they're both school district. So my apologies. Twenty-five, twenty-six dash fifty-three, resolution authorizing contract with the Greater Amsterdam School District Law Enforcement and our city sporting events, Alderman Collins.
Yes. For in recent years, it's become a practice. We staff sporting events that are held at Lynch Middle School, mostly football games and soccer games, and the way we do it is, uniform patrol officer takes the detail, I pay them out that week, their rate, overtime, and then at the end of the season, I submit invoice to the school district and they pay me back. And they agree to do that again this year.
All good. Back to resolution twenty-five, twenty-six, fifty-four, resolution authorizing contract, again, with Greater Amsterdam School District, ambulance services, Alderman Collins.
Same thing, football games require, New York State require an ambulance on scene, and school district has asked us to fill that need for them. We did it last year as well.
Any questions for the chief? Resolution twenty-five, twenty-six dash fifty-five, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute contract between the city and the Montgomery County DSS for Work Experience Program, Alderman, Alderman Quistamars.
Yes, this is the summer internship programs, work experience programs that we have throughout City Hall, and we do it every year.
Yeah, we've used DSS people, clients, several times in the past, success. Contract will allow us to continue to do so. Nothing has changed.
Any other questions for the mayor? Resolution twenty-five, twenty-six dash fifty-six, resolution authorizing memorandum of understanding with SIK Ventures LLC regarding fifty-six thirteen dash three dash one, known as the Lower Mills Complex, Alderman Maricello.
Sure. So Lower Mills Complex is site of the former powerhouse, and it's a hugely dilapidated building that's going to require demolition, that demolition is in the seven figures in terms of cost. There's a wooden structure on the parcel that collapsed, partially collapsed last year, and we had to raise the remainder of it. There's delinquent taxes in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. City hasn't foreclosed on it because of the condition of the parcel. There is an opportunity here with this developer, who is looking to have the city assign the rights to foreclose on the parcel to it. Upon a granted foreclosure, they're going, they will purchase the parcel from the city for the consideration of seventy-five thousand dollars. We arrived at seventy-five thousand dollars from the cost to the city for the demolition last year being a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, plus we had an additional cost for air monitoring. But at any rate, it was from the basis of the city having incurred that hundred and fifty thousand demolition cost, that we ultimately arrived at the figure seventy-five thousand dollars upon foreclosure being granted to SIK Ventures LLC. And they have an ultimate vision to repurpose the site for a mixed-use construction, or mixed-use site for multiple structures at the site.
And again, we're not selling the property, because we don't own the property, we're selling the liens we have on the property, and then it will be up to them to foreclose on the property and take ownership via that way. Anybody have any questions concerning this?
Well, and they have experience, right, and-
They have, they actually have done a major project in the Bronx, the last one that they've done, and it was a renovation of an old factory into housing. And so they do, they've got a pretty good track, they've got a good track record, and they've got a genuine interest in this property. Honestly, if sitting here to tell you, I never thought we would, that we would be able to pull a deal like this together. I have someone interested in that property, the way these people are, so it's a good thing, and we'll see what happens.
We have a public hearing right now, you can just call that, okay? And we'll finish your amendment.
Open our public hearing, and the public hearing is on, the ordinance for our vacant, our agent registry, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so the public hearing is open right now, so if anyone's here to speak about that, could you please come to the podium? Okay, there's no one here to speak about that, so we're going to close our public hearing and proceed with our call.
All right, so twenty-five, twenty-six dash fifty-eight, resolution approving audit, Alderman Collins.
Fifty-seven, you don't know.
Forget another one?
No.
I know, because he-
Alderman now.
So that's after, I was going to talk about that, that's the good. So for the benefit of Jimmy, because he wasn't here when we first started, I think we should move the, for the next order of business to be all ordinance I, to vote on it based on public hearing tonight. The second, the, the next would be, we'd move resolution fifty-nine, which is to vote on the fees, and then we would do resolution fifty-seven, which is to vote on the contract with Munirage. And on Jimmy's agenda, Alderman Collins is on fifty-seven and fifty-nine, but Alderman Collins has asked you to sponsor both of them.
I, I just said it, because you were on, you sat on a committee.
Sure. So we would do ordinance I, then we would do resolution fifty-nine, then we would do resolution fifty-seven. So ordinance I is the fee portion of the ordinance that we introduced, and we have a public hearing on tonight. Resolution twenty-five, twenty-six, fifty-nine is a resolution establishing registration fee pursuant to chapter one fifty-six of the Amsterdam City Code relating to the non-resident property owner registration. We all have been through this stuff over and over again, I don't know if it's necessary to, we can talk about it, but I don't know if you have any questions. This is the one that Alderman Collins name on, that she would like you to sponsor.
We're on fifty-nine, correct?
Yeah, we're on fifty-nine.
Okay, thank you.
So then we would be moving fifty-seven to the last, and I'll make an amendment on it when we accept the agenda. It's resolution twenty-five, twenty-six, fifty-seven, which is resolution authorizing the contract with Munirage LLC for the administration of invoicing, collecting registration fees required by the City of Amsterdam City Code, chapter one fifty-six. So it's more in order that way.
I don't think you need a motion, just to call it that way when you do the legislation, it'd be fine.
Okay. When I adopt the agenda, I don't need to say I'm switching? Okay. Well, that concludes the resolution portion. Mike, do you want to go over your report?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The saving program continues, we're into our alternate streets now, Market Street is on the second street, on Prospect, the north of the Van Dyke-
What'd you say, Market Street's complete?
Yes.
Just want you to say it again.
Oh, it is complete, and I don't think it could have gone better, actually, it was probably the least amount of traffic impacts we could have had. And, and so that is done, and like I said, to the north side of the Van Dyke intersection, from the beginning of our jurisdiction right here at the top of this bridge. We were still in the works as far as some alternate streets. We've done some of them, I plan to do several more here in the next couple of weeks to wrap up this program. And we're doing well on budget. Also, we are in the punch list on clubhouse, we have a follow-up on Monday, a number of things are occurring all at the same time there, pushing to get this facility wrapped up and ready for opening, fire alarm is certified, camera systems and sound systems and that, that, that work is underway now, it looks like they're probably, probably having one more day on it, is my guess, just from the conversations I had today.
It's just out of curiosity, because it's electronics, but are they, are they the same people that are hooking up the TVs?
Actually, yes, I think it was. The cleaning and preparation underway, matter of fact, there are two TVs in now, most of the shelving is in, it's, it's ready to be cleaned, and a couple of, like I said, there's still a couple of small items that we're working on, what they're, they are, I expect everything to be operational within the kitchen, and I expect that by closed business Friday. Let's see, what else? Repeat, of course, Crescent Ave Bridge is coming, but we are going to close that here the end of this month, that is the Long Bridge, everybody that, not the Short Bridge, going out to Pioneer Street, and demolition's going to follow shortly thereafter, and pile driving and some of the substructure work this late fall, early winter, and then concrete in the spring, and open it by July. We are, South Side Boardwalk is in the final stretch here. I'm confident we're going to make the substantial completion date. Wastewater treatment plan, our design plan, there's ninety percent plus, we've got a meeting on that next week, submission to BEC, and then there'll be some back and forth comments, as there always is, and with the, with the anticipation that we will in January be able to advertise for bits on the contracts. And as always, I welcome all questions.
Anybody have anything for Mike?
You're doing a great job, Mike, thank you.
True trade, is that great? That's a great job. Are the costs coming at one point three five?
No, we're under, they came under. Great job. Your honor, you know, so my anticipation is that we will be able to add a couple of the alternate streets on the alternate, like I said, we've already, we've already discussed in the past, so I'm, we didn't originally release all that work, knowing where our, where the numbers are going to be, but now that we do, I'm confident that we're under our budget considerably.
Well, that's great that you came under. Luis, do you have any, do you have a controllers report?
Not on the agenda, no.
No. Can I ask, Mike, the mayor, I just came from, Mike, I just came from the Upper Broadway, Queen Anne Road area. There's a strong sewer gas up in that area.
No surprise.
Can we deodorize those, so?
Well, we can, they're, it's interesting that you bring that up, because you're aware, Alderman, there is a new Amazon facility that's going, going to be out for construction, I think it's in twenty-twenty-six. As part of that project, one of the things that my office required of the developer was that they increase the size of that sewer at the top of Broadway Hill. What that'll do, because all, all the wastewater from that industrial park, from Beach Knott, from the new Amazon facility, all of that comes that way down that hill.
Right.
Problem is, is it, until it goes from a twelve-inch at several, about a hundred and fifty yards back from the top of the hill, and then it downsizes because you've got such a steep slope. And what it does is pressurize the line, in other words, it's flowing full, when you've got a sewer lane flowing full, it will, it pushes that gas ahead of it, and any way it can get out, it will get out. On lower floor, they, they get the same thing, some of the folks. This is going to alleviate, this will alleviate the problem on Upper Broadway, on the very top of it, and clean in and all of that.
Okay, we still have those drop kivas they use to-
Yeah, they hang those in the, they haven't used them in a while, if the, if the sewer gas is bad, we can put it in there. But as a check, I would also want, I would ask that anybody that's got an issue at their home, that they give us a call, because they may have a trap that's dry, they may have sewer cap that's off, something, so we should look at it so they're not getting it inside the buildings.
I might even send a sewer back there.
Pardon?
Can you send a sewer back and, the sewer back?
Yeah.
Can you have the one on the corner? We're not buying the-
Are they having, are they having trouble, or?
Well, I can tell, yeah. Because I will be getting calls.
So it's, it's backing up?
Yeah.
All right, I haven't, I don't think we've had a call there, but-
Okay.
It's been a while, but we'll go.
Thank you, appreciate that. Bye.
Okay, we have six minutes, mayor, do you have anything you want to discuss? I don't. Anybody have any questions? Any projects going on in the city? We did, we did get down to Inmans today, to what we're trying to do is, because we had such poor results on the response to our grants for lead line replacements, we only had fifteen people apply, we've decided to try and reach out in different ways, so we're trying to go to organizations with groups of people who may be qualified for the grant, and we made a presentation at Inmans today, and we've got seven people who are asking us to, you know, come to their house, make sure about their lines, it sounds like they have lead lines, and hopefully they can, you know, we explained what the guidelines were, but what we're going to do is, we're going to help them every step of the way, we're going to go to their house, we're going to fill out the application with them, we're going to make, and we're going to do this with PTAs and churches and things like that. Any, any of us can get a group of people together and actually go out there and present to them, versus, nobody's, nobody's online, nobody's reading newspaper, they aren't, today we asked for a show of hands of people who, there were twenty-five, thirty people there who had heard about this, and twenty-six people raised their hand they hadn't heard about it. So it's important that we reach out in different ways, so we did that today with good success, hopefully it's good success, we got seven people who are possible candidates for, and we're going to keep doing it until we no longer can.
So if we have any suggestions for groups, we can give those to Dan Gray, would you say, or?
Uh, Dan, yeah.
Yeah.
Dan made the presentation. Unfortunately, the audio video was not working at the time, however, what we're trying to, what we're trying to figure out is, you know-
If we can record.
When you got them captured, you know, try and get everything done all at once.
Right.
So we're, we're working on that strategy, and, for example, when we came back, we had a list of all the people, and we had engineering, you know, contact those people to set up inspections, but it's got, you know, we've got to, we've got to help them, because they don't understand, and so we're going to do a lot more reaching out and see if that works, and hopefully it will. We can stand for the pledge, right? For the meeting? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Quistamars.
Here.
Alderman Holiday.
Here.
Alderman Collins.
Here.
Alderman Maricello.
Here.
Alderman Carpenter.
Here. I'd like to adopt the agenda, make a motion to adopt the agenda with thirteen resolutions, one ordinance and a public hearing, and change of order for ordinance I, resolution fifty-nine and fifty-seven last, please.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Alderman Quistamars.
Aye.
Alderman Holiday.
Aye.
Alderman Collins.
Aye.
Alderman Maricello.
Aye. Okay, we have here committee or commission importance, golf commission.
Mayor, we met, and we decided that a lot of things that we were going through this year, like the signage and things, and we're going to wait till next year, when everything is all set in place for the new clubhouse.
It's a good time to wait since the end of the year.
It is the end of the year, I know, but there's another golf commission meeting, and then we need to discuss the fees, which will be coming up after the first of the year, okay?
Recreation Commission? They canceled the meeting for the third month in a row. Okay, one of the things we've talked about with the Recreation Commission is, this is the third or fourth time the meeting's been canceled, they're not able to get a quorum, so what, we have a large group, we're trying to get a cross-representation of our community, seniors, youngster, youth leagues, so we're trying to, we're trying to create seats for organizations, and I think what we're going to need to do is make them advisory members, not give them a vote, so that we can get enough people with voting power to a meeting, we don't need to get, what's the number we need to get? Seven?
Seven, I believe.
Yeah, if we, if we can get three with the advisory members, then we can have a meeting at least, there's things that we're not addressing that need to be addressed and need to be decided upon, and so therefore, we need to get quorums going, so we're going to try different things.
So mayor, I, maybe not the best time to bring it up, since you're talking about it, Robert Patel has, has agreed to come on as, as an advisor for Little Giants and some of these sports, if Alderman Maricello would agree to join him.
I'm not sure how we'd figure that one out.
He would like to be part of it, and to help reorganize everything to get it going.
For what?
For youth sports.
Youth sports.
Robert Patel?
Okay, well, we can-
Just another, another person to, to speak to.
All right, well, again, we, I think we need to bring that up with the commission, all right? Talk to them about it, see where it goes from there, but I, I mean, I, I know Mr. Patel, I know he'd be a valuable member of any commission, so, but I, I think it's a good time to talk to the commission about it, you know, Rob and Michelle, and get on the next agenda.
If we can get a meeting.
If you get, well, even if you can't get a meeting, I would discuss it with those people.
Right.
Ward?
We're over here now.
Thank you, sir. Okay, there are no proclamations.
Uh, okay, there are no proclamations today, communications and presentations. Evidently, we have a letter.
Yes. So I received a letter yesterday from a gentleman who won't be here tonight. Um, and it says, "Letter to Common, Amsterdam Common Council, Opposition to Ordinance Number Five of Twenty Twenty-Five. Dear Members of the Amsterdam Common Council, My name is Nick D'Amico and I am a property owner in the City of Amsterdam. As I am," it says, "present, but he is not present at tonight's meeting. I want to formally submit this letter for the record to express my opposition to Ordinance Number Five of Twenty Twenty-Five regarding the proposed registered agent requirement. I understand that the intent behind this proposal is to improve accountability and code enforcement. However, as written, it goes far beyond that goal. It creates unnecessary exposure for property owners as bureaucracy for the city and risks slowly the economic momentum we've all worked hard to build. My foremost concern is privacy. The ordinance would require property owners, including those who hold property through LLCs or trusts, to publicly name a local individual as their agent. This effectively forces people to link their personal identity or another individual's name to public property records. Many of us use legal ownership structures for valid reasons such as privacy, safety and asset protection. This requirement undermines those protections and compels disclosure of information that is otherwise lawfully private under New York state law. Beyond privacy, there are several broader concerns I urge the council to consider. Economic deterrence. Amsterdam has made notable progress attracting outs, outside investment and revitalizing older properties. Requiring owners to find and pay a local agent within Montgomery County or its border counties sends the wrong message that outside investors are not welcome here. Many will simply take their investment elsewhere, curtailing the economic growth and revitalization efforts that the city has been fostering. Administrative strain. This requirement would create a long-term record-keeping burden for the city staff verifying local residency, tracking changes and issuing fines. That adds bureaucracy without addressing the real issue of negligent owners. Fairness and proportionality. The proposed penalties, a five hundred dollar fine, one hundred dollars per month after that, and the threat of liens are extreme. They would disproportionately impact responsible owners while truly negligent owners would likely ignore them altogether. Lack of demonstrated need. The city already has access to every one, every owner's legal mailing address for tax and code purposes. There is no evidence that the current process fails to reach legitimate owners. At its core, this ordinance assumes that every non-resident owner is a problem waiting to happen. That simply isn't true. Many of us maintain our properties, pay our taxes and invest in Amsterdam because we believe in this community and its future. This proposal punishes the wrong people. It risks curtailing investment, compromises privacy and expands government oversight without a clear public benefit. I respectfully urge the council to reject this ordinance. Amsterdam's ongoing revitalization depends on collaboration and trust, not additional layers of bureaucracy. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Nick D'Amico, property owner, City of Amsterdam.
Uh, just a point of order, folks. Uh, this should not have been presented under communications and presentations. Uh, if, when this legislation was presented, if, I didn't want to interrupt, uh, so, I mean, it's, it's in the record. Uh, but it's one thing if one of the aldermen wanted to read that statement or task clerk with reading that statement when we're at the legislation component of the meeting. Nevertheless, this city is not establishing any new precedent where people are going to be able to email communications to the clerk's office and then have an expectation that those communications are going to be read into the record. We have a public hearing. There's an opportunity to attend those public hearings. If the person doesn't want to attend or could not attend that public hearing, they can pass the baton to an alderman who is receptive of the request. But that type of communication is not to become part of our agenda going forward under the communications and presentations. Thank you.
What if we wanted to hear it?
You read it.
Then you can do it.
You read it.
You're an alderman. But it's not for, it's not just part of the ordinary business of the agenda for emails being ever received by the clerk's office to be read into the record. And there is not going to be any precedent established.
Then tell me, what do you constitute communications?
Letters. Would that have been under public participation? Is that what you're saying?
No, no, wait, wait, let me, I need to know this because there's a reason for my question. What constitutes a communication?
I would think that this would be an official communication from another agency, another municipality or the county or the state. That type of communication, not an email or a posting on social media. That's not the type of communication that's part of our agenda. Presentations would also be the same type of thing from the invited guests that will come and speak and make the presentation at the meeting. That's different than someone taking the podium during the public session. There's differences and distinctions in those components of the agenda.
Okay, then you.
No one's saying that these statements cannot be read into the record. I'm just saying that the precedent cannot be established and there should not be an expectation that the public is going to email the clerk and then the clerk is just going to automatically start reading things into the record. We're not doing that.
So when yesterday she emailed and she had said that she was going to do this, do you think it would have been a good idea to let her know? No?
I'm not saying, I, I.
Email me. You didn't want me to tell me you were going to read this.
She, I think she had everybody.
Yeah. But I would have said something.
In between the lines, it's my assumption, and I suppose I'm making an assumption, that the clerk has been tasked to read this statement.
See, I asked her.
Right.
Because it's my, it's my experience for over twenty-five years. Anybody writes a letter to the city clerk under communications, they read it. Unless you, while I'm making this point now.
I would not.
You're going to read all communications as she reads. You will read her first and clear, clarifying, was permissible, what is it? Are you?
Did the letter state that they wanted it read to the common council by the clerk?
Yes, but we have a public hearing tonight.
I just want to make this clear so it doesn't happen again.
It looks like, it looks like this constituent said to themselves, can't make it to the meeting, can't make it to the public hearing, so I'm going to submit a letter instead. Excuse me. In my view, it would have been more appropriate if one of the aldermen had said, uh, Stacy, we received this letter from this constituent that couldn't be here for the public hearing. I'd like this to be part of the record for the public hearing. Please read this into the record.
And that's exactly what I did.
Stacy works for the clerk's office.
Wait, wait, wait.
The clerk's office is supervised by us and Jimmy asks. So she's representing the, the council.
I'm not here to argue with you, folks. Just tell me what the agenda says.
Because I'm the one.
Trying to make the distinctions between the different parts of the agenda. Do as you wish. You always do.
Yes, we do, but that's part of the agenda. And I said to her, she received the communications.
Pointe de peace.
Okay, just that it wasn't listed on the agenda.
Well, it's a communication.
It was handwritten on the agenda, so it looked like it was a last-minute addition. And that's kind of what I, I thought when I sat down.
Okay, so what would you suggest going forward?
Communications and presentations, letter from Nick D'Amico would have been part of the agenda.
Okay.
That's all. Presentations, that's all.
But he's saying it should have been read during the public hearing.
So then, and it should have been, and the appropriate spot for it would be a public hearing.
So it doesn't need to be written on the agenda.
Right.
Right. I think everyone, I think everyone did everything the right way. Jimmy had asked.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I mean, like, that's pretty much, we're just running in circles because that's what you wanted.
There's nothing wrong with this particular communication. I'm worried about the next communication.
Sure, you don't want to.
I'm worried about someone that's watching, watching this video and just saying, oh, all I have to do is send an email to the clerk and it's going to get read into the record. So I'm going to write to the clerk, I'm going to say this, that and the other thing now. And it, it might be something that none of you.
It should be the opinion of the alderman.
Yeah, we don't sponsor erroneous comments.
Automatic.
Exactly.
That's what we're talking about. Anybody could do this. You made it read into the record, and I know you guys don't want that to happen.
And I did read it. I do have my notes of what, there's the erroneous thing that were said.
Okay, and so, but I just saw this morning when I sat down, I just saw this tonight when I sat down. I had no idea what was happening.
Okay.
It was just a point of order.
That's all. Okay, any more communications and presentations? Okay, so we're onto public participation. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the common council?
Well, I would like.
You have to get up to the podium and state your name and address.
Bernadette, twenty seventy-three Mechanic Street. So is this part of the public hearing kind of thing? So something that came up to my mind as I was hearing all that was my concern about cars parking in so many different directions that are opposite of the traffic. And it's very confusing, and I don't know if it affects other people that live in the city, but you're going up Wall Street and you see two cars parked looking at you, but it's a, this kind of street. So that's very confusing. And I've called a few times and I said, you know, there's a guy parked opposite of traffic. Is that against the law? Well, no, they're supposed to go with the traffic. So I don't know all these answers, but I consider it a safety hazard, um, when you're driving up the street and you don't know which way traffic is going. So that's my concern as a citizen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, do we take the cars that are parked the wrong way?
Yes, that's really true, yes.
Yeah, so what's the, uh, best route for her to go? Just call the police?
Yes.
Okay.
Bernadette, you can just call the police. But I got to tell you, when I come to your place to drop off my, sometimes I park the wrong way, right?
Oh, God, yeah.
I have to because of the place to park, correct?
Give them a ticket, chief.
Yes, I am up.
I just want you to, right, I do all the time. I apologize. I hope I'm not confusing, but thank you for doing what you do.
You're on the side of the.
I sometimes park up, I sometimes park down, whichever way I happen to be going. Sometimes I make a U-turn. And I worry because I'm on Wall Street saying, oh my God, I'm making a U-turn on Wall Street.
Committing a crime, then you need to give them a ticket before you leave.
Yeah.
I know, I know. So I'm just bringing that up, uh, but, but thank you for that wonderful service that you provide. And I will continue to try and park legally when I drop my stuff off.
Thank you.
Um, engineering report, we already had, old business. Oh, anybody, I'm sorry, anybody else for public participation? No, thank you. Um, engineering report we already had, there's no old business, correct? So we're onto new business and that would be our resolutions.
Resolution twenty-five, twenty-six, forty-seven, resolution adapting minutes from last common council meeting by Alderman Carpenter.
So moved. Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Alderwoman Quistamars.
Aye.
Alderman Holliday.
Aye.
Alderwoman Collins.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-five, twenty-six dash forty-eight, resolution authorizing purchase of taser equipment APD by Alderwoman Collins. Whereas the City of Amsterdam Police Department would like to upgrade their department taser equipment at a cost of twenty-three thousand six hundred fifty-two dollars and twenty-one cents. Tasers are a type of less lethal energy weapons that are widely used by law enforcement.
Questions?
Alder.
Alderwoman Collins.
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Alderwoman Quistamars.
Aye.
Alderman Holliday.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-five, twenty-six dash forty-nine, resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty twenty-six, budget transfer city clerk equipment by Alderman Carpenter.
So moved. Any questions? Read the last resolve.
Resolve, the controllers authorized to make the following twenty twenty-five, twenty-six budget transfer. Decrease expense city clerk contractual expense four thousand nine hundred five dollars. Increase expense city clerk equipment four thousand nine hundred and five dollars.
Alder.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Alderwoman Quistamars.
Aye.
Alderman Holliday.
Aye.
Alderwoman Collins.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-five, twenty-six dash fifty, resolution transferring funds, insurance recovery AFD vehicle by Alderwoman Collins.
I'll read the second whereas.
Whereas the city received insurance recovery payments totaling seven thousand eight hundred seventy-three dollars and eighteen cents to cover the cost of repairs.
So moved. Any questions?
All of them.
Alderwoman Collins.
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Alderwoman Quistamars.
Aye.
Alderman Holliday.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-five, twenty-six fifty-one, resolution authorizing memorandum of understanding with Grow Amsterdam New York, Inc., regarding the operation of a farmer's market by Alderman Holliday.
Stacy, if you could just read the first three, it sums it all up.
The first three whereas.
Yes, please.
Whereas the City of Amsterdam being desirous to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Grow Amsterdam New York, Inc., relating to the operation of a farmer's market, currently planned to be located at the Walter Elwood Museum parking lot, with said MOU covering the period of the establishment of the farmer's market and one year of operations. And whereas, the State of New York has committed twenty-five thousand dollars funding for this farmer's market and the city seeks to provide funds to Grow Amsterdam at a no-interest loan that the Grow Amsterdam will repay when it receives a reimbursement from the state. The parties will agree to specific terms and conditions in a separate document. And whereas, the city is also agreeing to match up to seven thousand five hundred dollars provided by Montgomery County to the Grow Amsterdam to be used toward the cost of planning, managing and operating the farmer's market.
So moved. Uh, any questions? Call the roll, please.
Alderman Holliday.
Aye.
Alderwoman Collins.
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Alderwoman Quistamars.
Aye.
There you go, folks. So congratulations. We look forward to your hard work and the fruits of your labor.
Thank you, Bernadette. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Resolution twenty-five, twenty-six dash fifty-two, resolution budget transfer, recreation department laborer and snow removal equipment by Alderman Carpenter.
So moves. Any questions?
Stacy, read the second whereas and now there, now therefore, please.
Whereas a budget modification is necessary to provide funding for one laborer position to assist with departmental operations throughout the year, complementing existing seasonal staff during peak periods and to provide for the purchase of snow removal equipment. And now therefore be it resolved that the controller is hereby authorized to amend this, the budget to fund one laborer position in the recreation department and to allocate funds for the purchase of snow removal equipment as follows. Decrease expense pool chemicals, six thousand five hundred and eighty dollars. Personnel roads, ten thousand dollars. Contingency, thirteen thousand four hundred and twenty dollars. Increase expense recreational personnel, twenty-five thousand dollars. Recreation equipment, five thousand dollars.
Call who?
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Alderwoman Quistamars.
Aye.
Alderman Holliday.
Aye.
Alderwoman Collins. Resolution twenty-five, twenty-six dash fifty-three, resolution authorizing contract with Greater Amsterdam School District, law enforcement at varsity sporting events by Alderwoman Collins.
So moved. Any questions?
Alderwoman Collins.
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Alderwoman Quistamars.
Aye.
Alderman Holliday.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-five, twenty-six dash fifty-four, resolution authorizing contract with Greater Amsterdam School District ambulance services by Alderwoman Collins.
So moved. Any questions?
Alderwoman Collins.
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Alderwoman Quistamars.
Aye.
Alderman Holliday.
Aye.
Resolution Twenty-Five, Twenty-Six dash Fifty-Five, resolution authorizing mayor to execute contract between the city and Montgomery County DSS for work experience program by Alderwoman Questamars. Whereas the City of Amsterdam is desirous to renew a one-year contract with Montgomery County Department of Social Services for their work experience program. Said program being authorized pursuant to Title Nine dash B of the Social Services laws of the State of New York to provide for the establishment of public work experiences for the assignment of employable persons in receipt of public assistance. And whereas a copy of the contract being attached here too, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor, that Mayor Michael San Quanti is authorized to execute the attached contract with the Montgomery County Department of Social Services for a term commencing on October first, Two Thousand Twenty-Five and ending September thirtieth, Two Thousand Twenty-Six.
So moved. Any discussion? We call the roll.
Alderwoman Questamars.
Aye.
Alderman Holliday.
Aye.
Alderwoman Collins.
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Resolution Twenty-Five, Twenty-Six dash Fifty-Six, resolution authorizing memorandum of understanding with Seek Ventures LLC regarding SPL number fifty-six dot thirteen dash three dash one, known as Lower Mills Complex by Alderman Marticello.
So moved, please read the second whereas clause.
Whereas the city being desirous to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Seek Ventures LLC, assigning the rights of foreclosure of said parcel to Seek Ventures LLC with Seek Ventures LLC agreeing to provide consideration, the city and the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars at the time foreclose is grant, at the time foreclosure is granted with title and ownership of said parcel being conveyed to Seek Ventures LLC at that time.
Some, some, call the roll, please.
Alderman Marticello.
Any discussion?
All right. Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Alderwoman Questamars.
Aye.
Alderman Holliday.
Aye.
Alderwoman Collins.
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Resolution Twenty-Five, Twenty-Six dash Fifty-Eight, resolution approving audit by Alderwoman Collins.
Any questions? Alderwell.
Alderwoman Collins.
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Alderwoman Questamars.
Aye.
Alderman Holliday.
Aye.
Ordinance I of Two Thousand Twenty-Five to be known as ordinance five of Two Thousand Twenty-Five if adopted to be voted on in ordinance modifying chapter one fifty-six, the Amsterdam City Code relating to non-resident, residential or commercial property owner registration by Alderman Carpenter.
So moved. Any questions? Stacy, read section three, please, and that's it.
Annual registration required?
Last page, section three, effectiveness.
Oh. The last part. Section three effectiveness, a public hearing having been held on October seventh, Two Thousand Twenty-Five and upon ratification by common council, the incident local law shall become effective pursuant to C thirty-three of the Charter. Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Alderwoman Questamars.
Aye.
Alderman Holliday.
Aye.
Alderwoman Collins.
Aye.
And ordinance fifteen, resolution fifty-nine.
Resolution Twenty-Five, Twenty-Six, Fifty-Nine.
Fifty-nine.
You got it, Jimmy?
We're going to be fifty-nine before fifty-seven.
Yeah, I know, I'm, I'm sponsored by Michigan.
Resolution establishing registration fee pursuant to chapter one fifty-six of the Amsterdam City Code relating to non-resident property owner registration by Alderman Marticello.
Uh, read the whereas clause. The second, uh, third one, second one, second one.
Okay. Whereas also pursuant to Amsterdam City, one fifty-six dash three, the annual fee shall be established by resolution of the common council and may be subsequently modified by resolution of the common council.
Correct, go ahead.
Keep going?
Yes.
And whereas, upon considerable dialogue and discussion, the common council being desirous to establish said annual fee at fifty dollars for each parcel. Therefore be it hereby resolved that pursuant to Amsterdam City Code, one fifty-six dash three, the annual registration fee is established at the rate of fifty dollars for each parcel.
Okay, just so I can clarify this. Those whereas clauses, the last one, whereas upon considerable dialogue and discussion, the common council being desirous to establish an annual fee of fifty dollars each. And then if you go up one rather than down one, up one, this says also pursuant to this chapter, the annual fee shall be established by resolution by the common council and may be subsequently modified by this resolution. So we're going to establish this, but we also have the right to modify it. Okay? Okay, thank you. Call the roll. Any discussion?
I mean, you know, I don't like the wording considerable dialogue because I feel like my dialogue wasn't necessarily considered, but with that said, that's all my, uh, comments are regarding this, um, but.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Call the roll.
Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Alderwoman Questamars.
Aye.
Alderman Holliday.
Um, I just want to explain this vote, uh, annual, I didn't like the annual fee structure. Um, I didn't like the fifty dollars for each parcel, I do applaud everyone's efforts to try to get a streamlined system. Um, so with two wrongs and a right, I'm going to go no.
Alderwoman Collins.
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter.
I concur with Alderman Holliday, no.
Resolution Twenty-Five, Twenty-Six dash Fifty-Seven, resolution authorizing contract with Moonie Reg LLC for the administration of invoicing and collecting registration fees required by Amsterdam City Code, chapter one fifty-six by Alderman Marticello. Whereas the City of Amsterdam being desirous to a contract with Moonie Reg LLC for the administration of invoicing and collection of fees required by Amsterdam City Code, chapter one fifty-six. And whereas, the subject contract provides that Moonie Reg LLC shall collect a fee in the amount of forty dollars per subject parcel.
So moved. Any discussion?